Both Ms. Lewis and Mr. Tenucci are being honored tonight for really fulfilling some of the ZONE's values and missions that we've been working on for a number of years. And one of the pieces that we've been working on as a ZONE is really to find some more authentic ways to demonstrate student learning, some more authentic ways to showcase student learning, and create bodies of evidence for student learning that will be able to more likely really tell us where a student is and what their growth looks like, rather than depending on very important information, like assessment information, very important, but not a complete picture. And so, really, the way that this has begun to really just take off is really through some very concentrated intentional and specific portfolio creation from our sixth through 12th graders at this point in time. And there are really these portfolios, and why we believe that this is such kind of a dynamic direction that we're leading into is that we feel that for the first time, you know, you can showcase learning and you could use pieces of evidence like oral presentations, for example. You could use performance-based presentations, for example, to demonstrate student knowledge. However, we don't have a really good holding mechanism and evaluation mechanism for that type of demonstration of learning. And so, the portfolios are really turning in to that mechanism and that holding place for us, really, to have a more structured way to evaluate and showcase student learning, on top of also pairing that with a way to truly measure our pathways by the time students reach their graduation. And really pairing their pathway or I-CAP plans and their goal setting with the portfolio work as well, and so creating, quite frankly, more purpose behind what we're doing with the portfolios as well. And so, for those reasons, and I can tell you right now, we've had a number of students that have said, wow, you know, this is different. It's nice to actually be able to kind of evidence things in different ways. They don't use the term evidence, believe me, but they just like the idea of being able to, again, like, I can put my goal up here, I can put this choice, you know, this choice and voice idea, and giving our students more choice and voice. They have more opportunity, feel like they have more opportunity to pick things that they feel, again, demonstrate some of their learning as well. And there is no way in the world this ever would have gotten out of the ground without three very specific individuals. Two of them are with us here tonight. One of them could not be with us here tonight, Ms. Sarah Temple, Dean of Pathway Learning at Vista Ridge High School. Two of them are here tonight, though, which is our principal of Skyview Middle School, Ms. Kathy Tenucci, and our 21st Century Innovation Specialist, Ms. Pam Lewis. And so, I guess great, want to give them a lot of thanks for the immense time and energy and capacity that they put in to this particular initiative, and very thankful that they're able to be honored tonight. So, if you could please say just a couple of words, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. It's funny, because I've been presenting at this Inedco conference all week, and also I'm nervous after I've been presenting to hundreds of people, so I had to tell you down what I needed to say today. So, we're very excited about the digital portfolio work that we've started in the Power Zone. One of the biggest reasons for this initiative is because often the hard work of the students is either thrown away, discarded, or not shown to an audience outside of the classroom. We hope that by, God, be quiet, that by providing students with this platform, they'll be able to capture a lot of their learning, reflect on their growth, and be better prepared to identify their aptitudes, talents, and skill sets for a future college or employer. At this time, as Dr. Kierges said, all of our students in grades six through 12 have created the framework for their portfolio, as well as actually some third and third through fifth graders. And it's our hope that next year, this work will continue with our third through fifth graders, and eventually all of our kindergarten through 12th graders will have a digital portfolio that will evolve with them year after year, and they'll be able to take with them after they leave our district. Okay, I can read now. Thank you so much.
So, I had the pleasure of leading about 1,000 students, six, seven, and eight, creating a digital footprint for the very first time. So, I can't even imagine third graders, what that's like, because sixth graders are a trip. But we survived our first year. It's part of our I-CAP offering that we do at Skyview Middle School. We've started a soft skills lessons program that we deliver at the end of the day in our advisory period, and it's been a really, really good experience. Now, the challenge is getting teachers to understand that they can put things in the digital portfolio with the kids. So, that's been, it's been a great challenge for us. Can I answer any questions for anybody?
Any other questions? Oh, no. I'll show up, I can have a question. How does it seem to us responding?
Not really a question, just, I think it's really great preparation for higher ed and future career, if you said that. So, great work.
Thank you. Sit down a bit, ponder, it's okay.
I'm pondering, I've actually, we've had two names here, you know, who these people have clearly written for you.
Oh, that's my daughter, Kaia, she's two, and my husband, Brian, just retired from the district last year. He's a video, he's a filmmaker now. So, that's them. Kaia, can you say hi?
By the time Kaia's in kindergarten, you'll have your system case your file built.
That's my, that's my.
You'll have the whole experience.
She's really good motivation.
So, are you working with all of the high school students as well, as they're starting to look at the, I guess, the rising ninth graders in the boat, who need those graduation requirements and have alternate ways to meet them?
Yes, yeah, that's really what fast-tracked our plan. I've been trying to sweet-talk people into doing this for a while, and it wasn't until the CD came out with those graduation requirements that the plans got fast-tracked. So, yes, I'm working with Sarah Temple, particularly at Vista, to develop a plan to meet the needs of all of our learners and give all the kids, regardless of their abilities, a voice and choice in how they represent their learning and their education.
That may be the key, getting the teachers to put their things into, is recognizing that for high, that it starts at high school and then boils down to, hey, you see what they're doing.
Although sometimes it's the opposite. Yeah, our eighth graders go up to the high school, telling them how anxious they are to put things in. And the third graders that I, all the lovely teachers that asked me to come in the second last week of school to do portfolios with third graders, I knew I had to get them super-soaked, so I said, who wants to make a website all about themselves? And of course, they almost jumped out of their chairs because they were so excited. So, the excitement is really high in the elementary, particularly right now, and with the elementary teachers, so I'm just going to keep that fire soaked, and hopefully that momentum will continue as they continue with their career.
And feedback from the parent ship on parent conferences?
Yeah. Well, first, I should say, I made sure that all parents were communicated with, with just an initial letter, just so that people know what we were doing, so that our stakeholders are at least informed of what we're doing. And then, we plan to continue that communication as we develop these portfolios, so that parents know where they're going to get published, who's going to see them, and if they have any objections to that, that they can opt out and that they won't be published publicly.
And we took an opportunity this year to ask our teachers to use the portfolios for parent conferences, and it was a really good, very good feedback. Next year, it's not optional. It's going to be a mandatory piece, where all students will do the second round of parent-teacher conferences, demonstrating their work in their portfolio.
So, we have the techniques for each of you. So, Kathy, I think you're pretty easy to make your awesome work for students.
It's a pop-up.
I know.
I know.
Got it? All right. Thank you very much.
And that concludes our fantastic 49 presentation for here tonight, June 14th. Thank you, everyone.
We'll be back in about 15 minutes. We can't start that until 6:30.
Thanks for the talk.
Maybe you don't know, but I had, I got behind my schedule. I feel you're lucky.
I need my water. Yeah. 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 I have to follow them. Yeah. Hi, good to meet you.
Yeah. 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 You know me. Yeah. 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 So. Yeah. 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 I need my door. Yeah. 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 All right. I'd like to call our meeting to order at 6:30. May I have a roll call, please? Butcher.
Present.
Present. Assent with prior notice. Frye.
Present.
Graham. Assent with prior notice. Librium Wright. Here. I'd like to welcome everyone out tonight. Please stand and join us in the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Librium Wright. Aye. Motion carries for on to item 4.0, consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they need to pull for the consent agenda? And then may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote. Butcher.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Librium Wright. Aye. Motion carries for on to board update. Kevin, do you have anything?
I think we're done with graduations. It was a fun graduation season. Also, I think we all did it for everybody. Great ceremony and blood flow spreading out. It was really enjoyable. Good keynote. Sand Creek was fun just because who I got to sit next to on the stage. It was energy. So, anyway, good summer. Everybody enjoy their summer? And thank you for all you do for our kids. We really appreciate it.
I enjoyed graduations as well, but no other updates.
I don't have anything either, other than to remind everyone to please fill your forms out for the end of the meeting. And so we're, we do not have student board reps today because of the summer break. And so we'll move on to administration. Peter, would you like to?
Yes, I'm just going to mention one thing. We have been out doing rounding. The chief officers started doing rounding in January. And that's a systematic process of listening to our staff. And the thing that came up over and over as one of the greatest sources of concern was our chronic shortage in substitute teachers. So with, with your leadership and direction and great support for our principals and our staffs, we started a process, it's taken us about six months, to get in front of the Board of Education up in Denver, the State Board of Education, to request a waiver from substitute teacher licensure. And yesterday, they voted four to three to grant us that waiver. So that is a permanent waiver. It'll give us all kinds of options we didn't have before. So that's great news. And here we go.
Couple of facilities updates. First of all, the allies building has been completed and turned over. We're still, there's some final arrangements. They get the march and be out of the way here shortly. It's a great facility. Very happy to have it ready up and functioning. And the power zone's ready for you to use for some construction over the span of the last couple of weeks. And we'll be ready to accept the students in there. Also, I had the opportunity to tour Bennett Ranch yesterday along with the, along with the building documentation. And it is turning into an awesome, so. And I think when folks see that, that school open up, they're going to be extremely impressed with the work from the design and from the quality of the work that was done throughout. So very happy. Now, it is on track for us to go ahead and receive here in the early part of July. And the last thing that I'll mention now very quickly is a summer food program is on going down at Evans. Nutrition Services is supporting it in conjunction with transportation of members across the, across the district. That's a team across the district. And it's a pretty big deal as they're in the process of serving the children breakfast sandwich every single day, making a difference in the lives of all of those kids down there. So very happy to see that program on the line.
Very good. So our next item is open forum. And do we have anyone sign up? Of course. I know when I see you. And Ellen, you are our sole speaker today.
Hi, I'm Ellen Duckers. I'm a grandparent in District Eight. It's now 30 years I've been coming to board meetings and keeping the board honest. This is for my granddaughter, my seven-year-old granddaughter. She basically went on a field trip. And they had a bus with no seat belts. And she was sitting in the aisle area. And as the bus turned, made a turn, she slipped off the seat. So she was pretty upset. And she said, why aren't there seat belts on the buses? The other buses I've had field trips on, they had seat belts. Well, she's so used to being buckled in everywhere. And I would really appreciate if you guys have any extra money, please put seat belts on the buses. On May 17th in New Jersey, there was a bus crash due to the driver. He made an oops. And two people's passed away. There would have been a lot more if there wouldn't have been seat belts in the buses. So please, I know you guys are awesome and you do your best. Please, I love you. Put seat belts in when you can.
Thank you, Ellen. And you'll be happy to know that every bus we purchase is now equipped with seat belts. And so that's what we're doing as a part of our replacement plan for our equipment. And so with that, our open forum is completed. We're moving on to our action items. We tend to move through these fairly quickly because most of them have been discussed in a work session previously. And so we've already had our questions answered. So with that, we'll move on to 7.01, the action on the charter school contracts. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the charter contracts as presented in item 7.01 at the June 14th, 2018 Regular Board of Education meeting. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Librium Wright. Aye. Motion carries. Item 7.02, action on charter school waivers. May I have a motion, please?
By way of resolution, I move to approve the requested waivers with rationale and replacement plans as presented in item 7.02 for Pike Peak School Expeditionary Learning and Banning Louis Ranger Academy. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Librium Wright. Aye. Motion carries. We're on to item 7.03, action on policy revisions.
After a first reading at the previous board meeting, I move to approve revisions to the four policies in item 7.03 as recommended by the administration. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none of vote, please. Butcher.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Librium Wright. Aye. Motion carries. We're on to 7.04.
I move to approve the revisions to the job description for the student information system data and reporting analysts as recommended by the administration. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I just had one question because job descriptions in the past that we've read have had the pay range on them and this one doesn't. So are we looking at a change in practice in terms of how that's presented? And if so, how do we have that information available to the community when they're looking, looking at jobs and pay rates?
Hi there, I'm Paul Anderson, Director of Human Resources. Happy to respond to that question or those questions. We are implementing a change to how we are publishing the job descriptions. When a position is brought forward for consideration, the pay range information will be included in the cover sheet. And then the, it is also then after it's been approved, it's published on our website. At the HR, Human Resources webpages, we publish all job descriptions and salary schedules. And along with the salary schedule information will be the job titles and the associated, and the pay ranges.
So it'll be a part of that chart instead of individual job descriptions is where the public will still be able to see that information?
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on it? All right, then may we have a vote, please? Butcher.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Librium Wright. Aye. Motion carries. We're on to item 7.05, action on the contract between District 49 and CPCD.
I move to approve the contract between District 49 and Community Partnership for Child Development for 2018-19 school year as recommended by the administration. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Just for those who don't know what CPCD is, that's our Head Start providers. So may we have a vote, please? Butcher.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Librium Wright. Aye. Motion carries. We're on to item 7.06, action on a calendar change request. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the calendar change presented in item 7.06 as recommended by the administration. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And Amber, because this hasn't been presented to us, but Amber's just going to give us a little background.
Good evening, Amber Letstein, Executive Director of Learning Services. This calendar change request is coming primarily from our elementary principals who have typically used the May Professional Development Day to do assessment, although there is a different assessment day that is allocated on our calendar. And so this change just makes more transparent to our community what we're actually doing on that day. It does impact a change in a non-student contact day for middle and high school. It changes the day from May 3rd to May 10th. So we will obviously work closely with our families if they already had planned vacations during that time. We will honor that for them.
Thank you. Any other question?
Nope.
And then may I have a vote, please? Butcher.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Librium Wright. Aye. Motion carries. We're done with action items, so 6.41. Okay? All right, so item 8.0, one through five are just information items for the board. So we're on to our discussions.
Excuse me?
Oh, did I miss one? Oh, I did miss one, I'm sorry, because I flipped the page. So we need item 7.07, resolution for legal identity of the district. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the attached resolution in item 7.07 as recommended by the administration. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And I believe David was just going to give a couple of minute discussion. Final resolution?
Well, we are to the point where we have concluded a pretty extensive process as far as asking input from our community as well as our action committees around the district as far as what was the next steps regarding the idea of consolidating into a legal common name for the district. And as you have seen in the resolution, it is, it has been moved up there to the resolution to adopt the legal identity of El Paso County, Colorado, School District 49. So that's largely for legal matters. Use is, is kind of those types of ideas. But then the idea also in the resolution suggests that we would be in the public talking about ourselves as School District 49, or District 49, or D49 as we move to, in that direction with the resolution.
So this resolution is just codifying what was already our legal name and then saying also how we will be identifying ourself in media presence, right? And so our legal name has always been El Paso County School District 49. That's what one of our districts has with the state. So we're saying we're keeping that and we're continuing the same strategy we have had for the last several years and just formally endorsing it, correct?
That's correct.
There actually, actually there's a very similar little subnuance. The resolution is El Paso County, Colorado, School District 49. So we've added the word Colorado because there's been some dissonance with Texas. And we just took out the designation number because we thought it was self-evident that 49 wasn't. So that, it's really an addition of a word and a subtraction of an abbreviation.
All right. Thank you very much for all of your work on this.
All right, thank you.
And I think with that, we're ready for a vote unless anyone else has any questions or comments. All right. Butcher.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Librium Wright. Aye. Motion carries. So now we are on to our discussion items. Sorry, guys. 9.01, the 3B project update.
Hello, so for our update this month, we are really getting going on a lot of the summer projects now that school's out. But first project we have to talk to you about is Falcon High School, their P3. Most of the finishes are in now. We're actually going to be punching it on Monday, which is where you go through and find all the wall nicks and all the fine details that you want to have the contractor fix before the owner officially take possession of the addition. So it's really, if you walk through it, most people would think it's complete. There's some work being done in the mechanical room, but they are really close. So here's some pictures. These are about a couple of weeks old, but you can see it's pretty finished. Since then, they've done final coats of paints in most of the rooms. So it's close. Excited about that. Vista Ridge High School, the theater is ongoing, the catwalk's in place. They started painting all the drywall is actually complete now. The mechanical roughens all in place. All the stairs are installed. Basically, everything up there we talked about in progress is complete. They are, so this is the picture of their multipurpose space, which today, actually, the floors are sealed and it's completely painted and lights are installed. The gym, which is the picture to the right, is completely painted as well. And the sports floor should, or the gym floor is going to start in the next week or so. This is the theater dated pictures. That's all drywalled and they've started painting. Sand Creek, so we've started their fade, what we call Phase 3, which is the final summers where the work, which is their prototype lab and the common area. So this is the old commons area. If you've been in schools with all the walls and columns and all that kind of brickwork tore out, it's kind of interesting seeing that big piece of equipment in the school. So this is the area that used to be two, a small prototype lab and two computer classrooms. That gets renovated into one computer classroom and a very large prototype lab with all the updated electrical and stuff for all the equipment they bought to work. Bennett Ranch has been moving along quickly as well. All the stucco's complete. Flooring's in place. We punched the first wing of classrooms this week. So those classrooms are pretty much done except whiteboards being hung. Millwork is going in throughout. The admin area is just about complete. Painting is still ongoing through. They're kind of working their way back into the commons and out the building. So commons, they've just started putting the first coat of paint on. The tile is complete just about everywhere but one restroom. The playground equipment on yesterday, the final, the surfacing was being poured for it. So they had one and a half of the playgrounds done and the turf was already in place. Kitchen equipment's almost all installed. The hooking up and testing of it is, is starting to be done. So we do these early, but we did have a challenge with the elevator equipment room and some fire ratings on some interpretations and damper sizes. But we worked through a solution with the Regional Building Department. The elevator is actually being installed right now. Scheduled to be complete by the end of next week. Here's some pictures of that, the playground going in place. Some of the restrooms with final fixtures starting to be installed, a classroom with millwork in place. It's covered for protection. That's the commons area with the drywall in place and some of the painting done in this picture. This I found is, as I was updating pictures, kind of an interesting shot that these two pictures are just about five weeks apart down the same hallway. Just to kind of show how quickly things sometimes move. I'm looking in opposite directions, but it's the same hallway. And then this is the, they had a mural artist paint the Bennett Ranch poles with a bull breaking through the wall on the gym. So that's a pretty cool looking piece to the building. Then Vista del Pico is moving forward. Rough grading's complete. We have foundations in progress and the steel shops have been approved and we're in steel production. The project is on schedule and we're in for full building prevent as well. So they've started kind of pouring from the west going east. And this was two weeks ago as well. And they were probably about a quarter of the way to a third of the way through with the foundations. So some of the wet and then they're following behind, getting the stem walls put in place. So some stats on the P2 projects for the summer work going on. Through all our planning and kind of what made the cut that we could get done over summer and what we couldn't, we're looking at about 59 projects that will be taken on over this summer or finished. Some of them have already started before the summer started. Sixteen, and now this is 17 schools will have at least one project complete this summer. The amount of all this work that will be either completed or done during the summer comes out to about $6.6 million. And since we are at 49.1% two, three weeks ago, by the time I'm giving this presentation now, we're probably officially 50% through the P2 projects. So not as many pictures since, took these only the first week of the summer. But Sand Creek, this is some of their painting that's going on. The football field is still ongoing. And then this is Falcon Middle School. They're remodeling two of their science labs. And so this is the demolition that took place there. So next month, we will have lots of pictures because there's a lot of work going around all over the district. But any questions you guys have for me right now?
No, thank you. It's really exciting to see. And I know a few children who directly took their bikes across when they're not allowed to cross because they wanted to peek at what was going on at Bennett Ranch last week. Yeah, bikes are in someone else's house for a while for that trip. I was like, if you had waited a week, I could have shown you my board packet because it's on the list.
Yeah.
So I think there's a lot of excitement in the evening because it's getting put back together.
Yeah, they joke they got to keep the contractors off the playground because it was pretty fast. I'm glad you're in my lawn.
All right, so our next item is our proposed budget and DAC review. And as for our own friends.
Good evening, board. I feel like you guys have won the lottery today because I have the next 40 minutes of time. But you only have to listen to me for a few because there's other, other people here to speak. So first of all, I think I have John Newbill. He has been the representative from the DAC. It's been a big part of the MLO Subcommittee that we've done. But he's also the budget, part of the budget Subcommittee and has some of the budget priorities that he's received from his role and is going to present from that. So with that, John Newbill.
Thank you. Okay, so we've gone through the budget priorities review process. The guidance we gave to the SACS was to come up with three to five budget priorities, which the general guidelines were basically things more than office supplies, but less than a construction capital improvement project. So pretty broad there. And they can overlap with the MLO 3A type of things. So that's okay. So last year, we had about eight or nine inputs and this year, we have 22 or 23. So I'm not really going to speak to all of these. I'll just give you a little bit of time to read through each one. And then there's about five or six I just have some comments on. So this is Sand Creek High School. And let me know if you have any questions. We didn't do a detailed review of each and every aspect of all of these. They're supposed to be broad in nature generally, but if they want to be specific, we've given that flexibility as well. To the Evans, they kind of stretched out their five areas a little bit. But we did let them do paragraph format if they wanted to. So at least they save a little bit of space. So a lot of curriculum type of things that are on there, professional development that we kind of see as a common theme throughout some technology. Some of the SACS did brainstorming to do this. Some of them based it on either last year's proposals or items proposed by the principal that we reviewed on SACS. So one thing on Falcon High School, as I was just going to note, is we did just note as a caution that the tennis court replacement is kind of out of scope for what our guidance was. Even items that are out of scope or if they have more than five items, then we'd still just left them on there. We just kind of highlighted what's written. They didn't have to give dollar amounts, but they were free to do so if they wanted to. Okay, one of the things on here, so copier costs typically that would be something that would fall as far as the office supply and other end of the bookend. So, but there was, we had a little bit of discussion about this and really came down to the fact that one third of the budget was actually dealing with copier costs. So we decided to go ahead and leave that in there just to highlight the amount of cost. One other school, I think Odyssey, had a similar item listed, so we left it on as well. This is one of the SACS that actually did like voting, so that's how they came up with their items. I think they did the brainstorming format. Again, a construction item, but still highlights to me that the SAC feels is important. So as I mentioned before, just copier paper and supplies, you know, big item at this level. Okay, so I'd just like to thank all the work that was done at the school and the SAC level to get these items together. Any questions?
Can you explain this last page?
Actually, I have this.
This is not my slide. Also, when we look at these needs, are they, are they needs that are, the SAC is seeing that are not being met? Because I saw some of the things were clearly available for funding through MLO and stuff. Is there a gap here? Well, we've identified or is...
Well, we, it was basically an opportunity for the SACS to communicate the need, whether that's an ongoing sort of thing, like copier costs, or whether that was something a little more specific, like, you know, Falcon High School had a lot of things, including suicide awareness type of concerns. So, and like I said, it's not necessarily tied to any dollar or sign amounts. It's just the general thrusts that they feel that either to sustain items going forward or something that needs to be highlighted as an expansive type of thing. And that's a good question also because one thing that we're looking at as the budget MLO subcommittee of the DAC, and I spoke to the DAC to get feedback from the SACS, is as far as with the MLO 3A money, whereas we've seen it as much more of an expanding new, trying to do sort of things, is this something that we'd be comfortable with a sustaining type of capability? So we hope to get that feedback in August, September timeframe.
Are some of these things funded currently in their budget? So the budget discussions have been going ongoing, right? And so the DAC presentation is a part of what we need to also have during our budget process. But those conversations have also been happening with building and zone leaders and finance over the time of building it. So do we know how many of those things that are on the slides have been built into the current budget? And that might be a finance person's question rather than yours.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, this is more of just a recommendation, you know, so there is the regular administrative side. And this is where there was a lot of confusion in SACS in the past, and I think we clarified it some with the SAC representatives, so we got better feedback this year, that there's the administrative side recommendation that goes up that way and then this way through the SACS, through the DAC, to y'all. And so it's really to kind of highlight whether it's specific items that they want or more overarching type of themes, I guess you could say, is the focus of this presentation.
It gets better every year. Thanks for your viewership. And just a commercial plug here, they're always looking for volunteers from the community for the DAC and for the SACS and for the MLO subcommittee. That is our responsibility as a school district to be accountable for the money that the taxpayers have graciously granted us through our mill levy override, and that's to make sure we're spending it the way we promised people would spend it. So always looking for volunteers. It's a good group of people. And we have the budget subcommittee that is actually part of the DAC blended in that keeps the eye on the budget and they all kind of explain these spreadsheets.
We don't get into this one.
In their fleet. But we let Ron do it because he feels good about himself.
Yeah, that process, the process that John has created over the last couple of years has really improved. He's really started this, this information gathering very early on the process, which is why we've seen such good detailed lists. So thanks, John. So this is my little part of the budget. As, you know, I submitted the budget for your review at the last board meeting. And, you know, as we go, we get more detailed information. And so as we get more detailed information, I'll make updates to that budget package and this is one of them. So this is a sheet that we have in there every year. And it essentially just shows what the market valuation of our district is. You can see the $9 billion number at the bottom down here, and you can see the different mill levies over here and how many mills are levied against that market valuation. So we use this information, or I use this information then to populate some of the budget informations for our Fund 14, which is the 3A, MLO, the 3B, MLO, and Fund 46 maybe? Yeah. So here's the 3A. This is our, our fixed dollar amount MLO. So this is the one that we use again for compensation, for programs, safety and security and technology. So you can see how the 2018 funds are available. You can see how it's affecting the coordinated schools. That's the top, the top left of the tan boxes, then how it affects the charter schools, which is the bottom left. The coordinated schools if, or I'm sorry, the group priorities. So this is essentially district priorities that all the zone leaders and chiefs have kind of come together and said, hey, we think this is a priority for the district. And then of course, the bottom right adds all those up. We have a little box in the middle. You can see the determination of the funds available. This is the, this is where we get information off that first page. Some rounding errors, but essentially that fixed dollar amount for that MLO is 7.5 million. Any questions on that? So then the next, the next slides are just some of the detail of the budget that's loaded into the system. This is Fund 14. You can see the 7.5 million on there. We do earn a little bit of interest of 15,000 that we include in there. Next one's the Fund 16, 3B. This, this one is the fixed rate amount. So it kind of grows, it grows as we grow as a community. Again, just, I think I made some adjustments, adjustments down here on the expenditure area, just to show what our actual principal payments are and interest payments are for the year. And that's it for, for my piece. So we've asked all the charters to come up with a small presentation, and so I'll pass that on to you. First up is Banning Lewis, and I believe Todd Morris is here to discuss that.
Perfect. Thanks, well, thanks for having, having me tonight. I'm Todd Morris, Chief Administrative Officer at Banning Lewis, and glad to spend a three-minute allotment. I don't think I'll use all of that unless you have a lot of questions. So a big change for us this year, we of course onboarded a second campus and now we're expanding to additional grade levels at that campus. So here are some of the big factors causing changes in our budgeting for 2018-19 school year. And one piece is our bond debt service is increasing by about $400,000. And then interesting change, our investor requires a coverage ratio of 10% of our revenues need to send, exceed expenses by 10%. And so that number is going to be going up this year, a 5% increase in that amount. This was done a long time ago. Of course, we know here recently that increase in PPR is greater than that, but we'll, we'll adjust that after that October count in the fall. Then we have some enrollment projection changes. Our Banning Lewis Ranch Academy on campus, K5, is remaining about the same this, this year as we expect. We're kind of at capacity there, but our secondary campus increasing by about 25% in fiscal year 19, so going to next year. Our management company, oh, sorry. I don't need to start over doing. Our management company, Excel Schools, has a enrollment threshold. When enrollments hit certain numbers, the management fee percentage decreases. So we're excited about that decrease from this, this year to next year. And then our total authorized fee and management fees will go up though because of the increase in all the total number of students. So here's a summary of our revenues and how those go up in 10% increase overall going to next year. We are going to be asking for a little less in MLO reimbursements. The other one, big drop you'll see in fundraising, that's a little bit of a misleading piece. Of course, I was here in front of you a couple of months ago talking about a new track and a lot of the fundraising's being held off until that's, that's moving along. So then as far as expenditures, again, about a 10% increase from one year to the next. And most things pretty steady. Least paid little increase across the board. Of course, a big jump in high school instructional services because of the increasing enrollment there in high school. So there you have it, three minutes. And at least half of it into the microphone so I could be heard.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks for having us. Okay, from Management Classical, we've got Frank Fowler.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Oh, do I? Oh, I'm always good at that. Okay. Projections, we're, we're trying to be very conservative with our projections. So over the years, we had an increase in enrollment and in this past year, that, that changed for us. So we've maintained where we sort of ended up with our October count this past year. So we're trying to be very conservative about that FTE of 700. There's our estimated PPR ongoing negotiations with our EMO on their indirect costs. The initial budget includes a 9.5 indirect cost. I believe that there's been negotiation around that, that, that that's not where we ended up. I think we ended up at 12. I could be wrong about that. Preschool budget is separate from the main school for fiscal year 19. And excited about the work that we've done to make sure that we're doing that appropriately. Projected income is 128K income for the main school and then 23 income for the preschool. Thank you, whoever's doing that. Changes since the budget was approved, PPR is an increase, MLO indirect, there it is. Yeah, that confirms that. And increased expected legal and consult costs by 75K for costs associated with our school relocation. Projected income is now 39K, which is 89K decrease from the initial budget. And then there's no change to the preschool budget. Thank you.
Any questions for Frank? Okay, thank you, Frank.
Okay, from Gepso, we've got Don Knapp.
Like you said, my name is Don Knapp. I'm from Expeditionary School of Expeditionary Learning. I believe the last time I spoke in front of you, I said that would not be our name going forward, but it is. But I only have three minutes. So I want to say first of all, thank you. Thank you for the support of the district. I'm on a school board in a, in a different city and it's just so nice to be in this district. The, the support and the processes of this district are really strong and supportive of all students, including charters. So I want to say I appreciate that. On that note, because of the MLO sharing, some of the things we've been able to do in the past are a full playground renovation, including a new turf field preparing to our southern fire lane, security cameras around our school that have helped quite a bit in a lot of different areas. Currently, this summer, we have some projects going on. Today, we have parking lot extension happening at our, at our site, which is making our parents very happy. And then next week, we have nearly 100 students joining us for summer enrichment, which is about 25% of our population, and that's all coming from MLO funds. And so we're excited about that opportunity. The other thing about our budget is we've maintained about the same budget for a number of years. Percentages, amounts go up, percentages stay the same. So our, we've been full since 2009. Our, our class sizes haven't changed. Our, we have added classrooms. And so that's been easy to, to just look at our budget in that way because our budget stays similar. And until this, until this year, we had the same accountant as well. And so budgeting process was pretty consistent, pretty easy at my school. Having said that, one major change we're making for our budget for next year is adding a math specialist slash interventionist. And we're kind of moving away from this idea of what's the best curriculum? Where are we going to find this math curriculum that nobody seems to have and is not working for anybody? And so really doing some research that we've already started, some of it in conjunction with the district and some of it on our own, just that it's a little bit less about curriculum than it is about practices. And so this position we're adding will add stronger professional development for staff, which research says is important, which also gives deeper understanding for teachers, which translates better instruction. And then just looking at problem-based work, one of the, one of the deficiencies of math curriculum is there's not a lot of just digging into real work for kids for math. And so having someone on staff to be able to take the time to create a bank for us and perhaps others to, to, to work on math in that way, this is some of the ways they're going to be doing it. Big picture, I know you have our budget, which is why I didn't include a lot of numbers, but our current budget bottom line for next year is a little over 17,000. Our audited numbers ending June 30th of '17, our general fund was increased by 307,000 up to 1.9 million. And our projected increase for ending 2018 will be significantly less than that just because of some staffing and caper projects that we've done.
I just want to say thank you for thinking about that parking lot expansion because I know it makes a difference to the sort of entering and exiting in that area, trying to get in and out of the neighborhood as they're expanding. So. So, that's an awesome community relations thing too, and that is just a parent thing.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Eileen from PTAC.
Yes. Thanks, thank you. Hi, thank you for giving us this opportunity to briefly go over our budget. Okay, great. So, the current projections are that we'll begin the year with just over $200,000 in our fund balance. Going into our third year of operations, we're expecting revenue of $2,779,305, and that is 13% higher than this year, ending on June 30. We are using PPR of $7,767, and we're calculating capital construction at $250 per pupil, and we're holding all other revenue sources level to be as conservative as we can. We just, this week, finalized the terms of our relationship with the Housing and Building Association of Colorado Springs, and they're, it's a multi-year relationship, and they will be providing a new source of revenue for our trade programs. And so, those numbers will be included when we redo the budget in October. This budget includes enrollment of 328, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, 328 full-time equivalents. The numbers today are not as where we'd like them to be, and so we are aggressively pursuing advertising campaign and engaging our community to help spread the word and to let people know. So, we are, at Tuesday, we were only at 285, and so we're, we need 43 more just to make this work at these levels. On the expense side, our expenses are here 19% higher than this year, and of that increase, 83% is within our instructional programs. Really, aside from salary adjustments and some anticipated increases in overhead like utilities, everything else in support services is pretty flat compared to this year. So, we are budgeted to have a net increase of $1,791, although it's according to plan. And so, that's where we are at this time. Any questions?
Are you exploring options if you don't get the added pupils you need?
Yes, we are. This budget includes staff, staffing increases that we wouldn't do, and we just would minimize. And again, our new partner with the Builders Association is not in here at all, so it's going to be lean, but we're confident we can do it.
Yeah, next up, we've got Rocky Mountain Classical, Christiana. Am I tagging this?
Hello, good evening. I'm Christiana Fogo, I'm the Headmaster of Rocky Mountain Classical Academy, and I'll be presenting next week at the National Charter School Conference in Austin, Texas, on how to manage budgets and make student-centered decisions. And so, I just want to say how appreciative I am to be in a district that models that themselves and is in partnership with its charter schools. It is not the case, not even in our state, but nationwide. But having said that, I'd like to turn it over to our CFO, Sarah Segrist.
Thank you. You're my good mentor. So, I did more of a broad overview on what we're going to be doing with our budget for next year, too. Our student count, we have based, projected at 1407, which is about 70 students higher than where we were at for this year. The PPR rate increase that we are all aiming to see this year, we used to offer a small salary cost of living increase for our staff, and also offer more professional development for the staff and returning teaching staff, so that we can provide more education for them, so that they can take it to the classroom, sorry for that. All of their expenses have been projected using our actual run rates from 2017-18, increasing utility rates by 7%. Most other things got increased by 10%, but keeping things based on what my actual rates were at for last year. Projected 97% use of expenses versus revenue, that will provide a small positive fund balance at year-end. With that, I'm trying to stay very conservative with basing everything off of our student count and keeping our expenses in line. We are in the process, and our construction onsite is set to end June of this year, or this month, and we will be offering a new program at the school for early education wing for pre-kindergarten. That pre-kindergarten program is not rolled into our general budget for this year, that's a standalone, it'll be Fund 19. Just wanted to do an overview for what we've been using our MLO funds for. Staff compensations, offering scholarships, continued stipends for additional programs that we're offering for the student body, and this year, we're also looking at bringing in some additional training for safety. Let's see, and using, one point that we brought up is maybe using the building as a training site for some of those training software safety officers, so that they can come and get familiar with our building site as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Next up is Gold and Deb Morton.
Thanks. I have my hand before the action process, just kidding. Good evening, good evening, Madam President, good evening, members of the board. Deb Morton, Gold Academy, CFO. Jump right into this. First of all, thank you very much, thank you for your support to Gold for many years and going forward, and also for giving us this opportunity to just present some of our highlights for our 18-19 school budget. We went with a proposed student count of 3,880 students. That's 100 students more than what we budgeted this past year. We feel that's a pretty conservative estimate, and based, and we're feeling better even more about that than as we see our enrollment, our returning student enrollment, and the principals reporting in on new enrollments and what's in our waiting list. So, we feel that we will meet that target and hopefully surpass it some as well. With the 3,880 students, we kept our PPR when we prepared the budget back in the spring, we went conservative as well, kept our PPR funding at the current rate. We realize now that we're going to pick up hopefully some new PPR additional, and if we do that, we will certainly catch that in the October revision. But, and the other piece of this is, so the increase in student count equated to a little over $700,000 in additional revenue, which we did allocate to our personnel budget, and that's giving us the ability to make some really what we've been wanting to do for our staff, and to help retain our excellent teachers and all of our employees, as well as attract quality people going forward. So, with that said, our PPR is the big increase. If you look at our total revenue budget, it actually went down quite a bit, a million six, and the reason for that is, is in this past school year, we had budgeted and maybe anticipating that we would need almost 2.1 million of prior year reserves to do the big projects we did over this past year. We certainly don't need that going into the 18-19 school year, so that makes the big variance in our overall revenue, why it decreased so much, but if you just look at our current year funding on PPR grants, we actually had an increase. I guess I can move on to the second page on the expenditure side. I'm just going to touch on the highlights on that, and most of this is going to fall into the personnel budget, because this is where we really truly focused our priorities. Within this budget, we allowed for a $1,000 cost of living increase for all of our employees, and that is because we did have the increase in the PPR funding. We also looked to our teacher salaries, and I realize that if we were going to attract the best and keep the best, we needed to raise those scales as well. So, we gave all our teachers a $2,500 base pay increase. Our ESS teachers actually will receive a $4,000 base pay increase in this coming year budget. We also budgeted some additional teacher positions, six additional teacher positions during this budget, as well as sprinkling of other support staff across the organization. We increased some paras, and we also added some support staff in the administration building. This budget includes enough funding for 116 paraprofessionals, which is where we wanted to be, and over the last six months, we've been able to hire additional pairs, and we want to keep them. They are a really, really important piece of our support, wraparound support, particularly for our at-risk kids. With that said, I've got to get my glasses on, sorry. It equated, our personnel budget actually went up 7.6% year to the current fiscal year to the next year. The other, I'm not going to go through this thing one by one, I think we've all reviewed it, and actually, our operating budget, I will make a comment that as a whole, didn't change a whole lot. In total, in allocations, we were able to move money out of certain line items due to efficiencies. We really cut down on our communication costs, we have a terrific CIO, and he's really on after some savings in that area. So, but the big piece I wanted to mention is our concurrent enrollment. We increased that line considerably, it was a 35% increase. We actually have estimated 500 enrolled students for the school year 18-19, and if I can just quickly mention that we actually graduated 15 students this last week with associate degrees. We also had 14 platinum workforce certificate graduates, as well as over 180 students who concur enrollment credit. So, we're so pleased to be able to have to find the funding for that line item. And then, the final, we finished up, oh, I will just point out the property, you see a big variance there, that was the large increases we did in property budget this year. We furnished all our sites, we updated a very illing old vehicle fleet, and we also did major purchases in our technology inventory. So, with that said, we're at a total of 29.6 million in expenditures, and looking forward to the video. If any questions. Yeah, thank you very much.
Last but not least, our newest charter, Jeanette Peans.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Spritz gave, oh, there we go, when he asked for a high-level review of our finances, where I used to work, high-level meant at 10,000-feet view. I have been at this position for a little less than two months, and I've given you a 14er view. We currently have about 350 acceptance letters, and I have been counseled to do a conservative budget, so we built our budget on 310 students. And as you can see, we have a CCSP grant of 229,000, and we have a one-full-day kindergarten class at tuition of 315 a month. Currently, our plans are to, according to our enrollment, it will be about 20 teachers, full-time teachers, somewhere between four to six teacher aides in our administration and our support staff. We'll be in a temporary facility for a while this first year. We're going to be at the Mountain Springs Church, they've been gracious enough to host us, and we're very thankful for that. And our plans are to be in our permanent facility later on in the year. If I have a few minutes, I'd just like to give you a little bit of information about Liberty Tree, other than just the budget. Liberty Tree is a traditional American education, and we are affiliated with Hillsdale College, and we are number 17 in the nation to be, it's part of the VCSI initiative, which is the Hillsdale. We are the second in Colorado, excuse me, and we will begin with a K through A enrollment, and every year, we will increase at a rate. So, we will be eventually a K through 12 enrollment, and we will hold it to a 700, a little bit above 700 enrollment if we are full. I just wanted to take this time also to thank all the charter schools. I have been tapping into them for information, for recommendations, and they have been totally awesome in helping. And D49, their staff, every time I call, I ask for recommendations, I ask questions, and they have been, joining on the spot, they have been very, very, very helpful, and I do appreciate that, and I want to extend my thank you to them, and be sure to tell them thank you.
Thank you, Board. Any questions?
Thank you, Ron.
I appreciate it.
So, our next item is our concurrent enrollment performance report with Mary Perez.
Good evening, Mary Perez, concurrent enrollment director. I'm here tonight just to give you an overview of this last year and some of the exciting things that have been happening across the district for our high school students in concurrent enrollment. We have a new vision statement to promote and ensure affordable and equitable access to successful college learning. My partner, Paul Finch, who is an English professor, he's also our coordinator of concurrent enrollment instruction, he works with all of our high school teachers who are now adjunct professors, is camping with his family tonight, but you will see him the next time around. Just a quick overview, for those of you that may be familiar with concurrent enrollment and those that may not, concurrent enrollment is an opportunity for high school students to take college classes while they're in high school, whether those are career and tech ed classes, or general ed classes toward four-year degrees. These students have to be college-ready based on their pathway, and that's kind of an important clarification, because many of our students are looking for certifications that are stackable toward career and technical education pathways, others want to go to medical school, we have English teachers, we have a lot of different types of pathways, and we do focus on specific college readiness based on those pathways, so it's very individualized. And concurrent enrollment covers the tuition and fees for these courses, provided students make As, Bs, and Cs. So, for students that are unable to, they have hiccup or some sort of a challenge in the semester, they are required to repay the high school for that tuition. And I think if Brett were here, he would be happy to know that our collection rate is a little over 80%. So, families are being responsible, and they're taking it seriously, and schools are bringing it back in. We do provide free textbooks for on-campus classes, as well as for free and reduced lunch students. Those textbooks are recycled and sold when they go out of issue, so we try to be responsible with our taxpayer monies therein as well. We do provide transportation to two of the four... We do provide transportation to two of the four Pike's Peak Community College campuses. Each college course generally provides two semesters of weighted high school credit, even though that's a semester-long college course. And when I say weighted high school credit, that would be equivalent to an AP class. So, an A would be worth five points. And these one-semester college classes earn two semesters of high school credit. They also provide us with mastery demonstrations, which align to the new CDE graduation requirements, which is important. And we hope at the end of their experience that these high school students are doing college well and that they understand the process, they know how to register online, build a schedule, manage their time, take a look at their course load, and make sure that they still have time for their athletics and their church activities and many of our students are working. So, all those things are very important to us. As far as our priorities for the past year, our number-one priority, based on feedback from our parent survey, satisfaction survey, was information and messaging, making sure that all of our families are aware that concurrent enrollment is out there and what it is and how to apply. So, we've, we're lucky enough to have a pretty terrific communications department. Erin Valeskas is our graphic designer, who has invested some time building some brochures and I think you all have one of these. We have formed a triad between concurrent enrollment, career and technical ed with Nikki Lester, and our new workforce learning manager, Bob Gemignani. And together, we have put together these brochures so that families are aware of all the different ways to help our students get to know themselves better. We're not trying to land on a specific degree or a specific pathway, but to help students learn a little bit more about themselves, not only their interests, but their natural gifts and aptitudes along the way. So, through career and technical ed, students can experience some project-based learning in elementary, middle school, and high school, which helps them get to know themselves. And then Bob is setting up so many fantastic opportunities through work-based learning, field trips, and job shadows, and internships, and apprenticeships, and all those things help students understand their own goals and their own dreams. And hopefully, by the time they get to high school and if they're interested in a career that requires some sort of college preparation, that we can match the right, align the right classes for them. We also had an interest in expanding our reach to our ELL families this year. So, we were really happy to partner with Martina Meadows, who is just a great collaborator. She invited us to join her families at an event one night. So, we, the three of us went and talked about the different opportunities to those families, where sometimes they don't get all the information clearly, don't really understand what those opportunities are. So, that was fun. And the second opportunity that Martina allowed us to participate in with her facilitators, her ELD facilitators, was to do some vertical alignment in English. So, we brought in Pike's Peak Community College and Paul Finch, our English professor, working with those facilitators, and that will be an ongoing thing, very, very, very exciting. We wanted to expand transportation. As it turned out, we actually cut one route to the Rampart Range campus because of low ridership and we want to be really responsible with taxpayer money. But our CTE courses offered at the downtown, I mean, at the Centennial Campus has really grown, and so we ended up having to add an extra route in that, for that location. Parents and really students across the district are looking for more on-campus classes and instructors to teach those classes. So, of course, that will be, has been and will continue to be an ongoing focus for us. And there's two reasons why that's important. Our instructors actually become authorized to teach at Pike's Peak Community College. So, if they want to teach in the evenings, weekends, or even during the summer, make a little extra money. That seems to be an interest to some of our teachers when they have time. Some of them are in grad school right now, trying to become college adjuncts. And then, of course, the cost to us is $90 if we're instructor teaching at our own classroom. So, that's important attention. So, how are we doing for on-campus college classes? You can see across the top, we've got our three major campuses, Falcon, Sand Creek, and Vista, along with PPEC. And the campus, the most high-demand classes on our campuses start with English and literature and history. And the little diamond-shaped symbol are teachers that are in graduate school now, so they're teaching full-time, going to grad school at night, and we are paying for that. We will pay for the last 18 credits of grad school, not a full master's, but the last 18 credits, so they can be qualified to teach these courses. So, Falcon's going to be standing up their own teacher this fall in U.S. history. I'm really excited about career math because we have a lot of students interested in associative applied science degrees and career and technical ed-focused pathways. So, Amy Rogers is going to be standing that up at Vista Ridge. We did have another candidate at Falcon High School. Unfortunately, we lost a math teacher to industry and that's kind of a hard thing to have to choke down, but maybe we'll find someone else here soon. And in another year, in 2019, '20, we will have a teacher at Falcon High School, Kiara Coffin, who will be standing up some college biology classes, which is awesome because they have that academy of health sciences there. And biology and college algebra trip up our students more than any other classes. So, we're really excited to be doing that well at Falcon in another year. Public speaking is a foundational class that a lot of college students have to take and Sand Creek High School has a teacher, Leslie Fisher, who is loved by all students and she's going to be standing up public speaking there. Psychology is also very much in demand and then Paul Finch is going to be finishing his master's degree work in ethics this summer and standing up that to support our critical thinking initiatives across the district. So, how do we do this year and what does it look like for next year? Fall and spring of 2017, '18, you can see the actuals there. Our student enrollment jumped up a little bit between fall and spring, which is pretty typical. We usually see about a 10% to 15% increase as students that miss the deadline for fall or if they become college-ready between fall and spring. You can see the credits earned, courses passed, and the bottom line shows our pass rate, which is really showing that 93% of our students are getting As, Bs, and Cs in their college classes, which is something that we should be very, very, very proud of. What that means is our high school counselors are doing a darn good job, wow, doing a darn good job of advising and coaching students along. What's really exciting about this graph is that the fall projection is 539. We may land somewhere around 500 or so when everything settles, but that's about a 60% increase. That's huge. We're very proud of that. This graph just very quickly shows the increase over time over the last few years. The middle bars, I don't know if you can see the difference in the color, shows 2018, '19 projections and then on. My guess is if our large high schools land somewhere around 200, 250 in that saturation, we may be looking at 1,100, 1,200 in the next three to five years across the district. And the last slide, very quickly, planning forward. We want to continue with that vertical alignment. I told you a little bit about English with the ELD department. Paul Finch is now working with the iConnect Zone, English teachers in both Spring Studio and PPEC. We've done some math collaborations with Pike's Peak Community College, where we brought all of our Algebra II, pre-calc, and career math teachers that were doing the college to speak, and that's been fun. Equity and Access is going to be a focus for next year and then more of the triad relationship with career tech and workplace learning. By the way, 34% of the classes that our students are taking right now are career and technical education courses. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
I'll jump in. What are those on that easel, Mary?
Oh, I'm sorry. Our fantastic communications department also has created some really cool posters and over here on this easel is a little bit larger view of it, but in reality, these posters are going to be seven feet tall, three feet wide, the size of that door opening. And again, this is the creativity and brilliance of Erin Valeskas in the communications department. The focus for these posters will be to try to engage students, not maybe the freshmen that are coming in that are trying to figure out what high school is all about, but that 15-year-old sophomore that is back in school but doesn't really know what they want to do, using visuals, so pictures of careers with career clusters and some of the titles of jobs and what's required, whether that's a certification or on-the-job training or an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree. So, we're trying to get students excited. So, we brought this really cool level of funkiness and bright colors, and there'll be a set of four and two other colors, red and blue as well, on all of our big traditional campuses and then a little smaller size for some of our other high school campuses. Sorry, I forgot. That was the most important thing. I slipped right over it. Thank you, Pierre.
As a higher ed professional and professor, I really appreciate the introduction to higher ed and prep for college that you guys do. It's great.
The feedback on the parent survey this year was really, really strong, very good.
Well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Thank you very much. Our last item is a new job description with Amber Lassman.
Good evening again. This job description is intended to support our Title I elementary schools. It's a paraprofessional-level position. We have had a teacher on special assignment being shared among all of the Title I schools and the principals have requested additional support to enhance parent and community engagement in their schools. I should say that the position is fully funded with the school's Title I funds.
Okay, any questions? Okay, then we're all good with moving it forward? Okay, so move that forward, please. And we'll do that at the June 27 meeting so that they can have it for hiring because they can interview, but they can't hire until we've actually approved it. So, then we're on to our last item, Department of Education rules. And so, this is to bring it back to everyone's attention again. I believe where we had left it last time was we had asked, we had printed over to the chiefs and said, "Help us with the professional development plan." But I think the goal that we had discussed was related to the Baldridge criteria and becoming more competent in how we use that as process improvement, correct?
That's correct. And I have not finalized a proposal for you. I have requested proposals. I just don't have one for you. But I have a couple of pretty interested providers. We talked about going in that direction. But I do want to encourage you, I'll make sure I've got the date correct, because one of the elements that we put into that request for proposals, makes it sound a little more formal than it actually is, but the conversation to requesting proposals was to incorporate the Baldridge Conference and their, that conference is October 23, '24 in Denver. And there is a pre-conference on the 23rd where you can get an introduction to the Baldridge criteria if you wanted to do that. And then there's the full conference on the 24th, which is going to be a really strong national-level conference with multiple national award winners presenting. So, regardless of which of those plans we walk forward with, we intend to include that as an option, knowing that not everybody will be able to, but for any of you who can, strongly, strongly encourage.
Is this similar, is this the same one that I went, obviously different presenters, but it's the same format that I went to like three years ago, right?
Correct, yep.
When we were first starting the process?
Correct, yep. It was in September 1st, I think, of 2015, was that?
It was, it was worth it, I will say, although I will also say, whether or not I'm going depends on when May my husband returns from the Middle East because he's due back that week and that will take precedence over going to Baldridge, unfortunately, in my family. So, but if he's delayed or home two weeks early, then that discussion changes for me. But I will advocate for folks attending it because I did find it extremely valuable and they not only had high-performing education organizations there, but also the businesses. So, you can see the juxtaposition. So, I thought it was helpful for me as we entered the process. And I think Kevin might have been there as well, weren't you? Did you go to the full-day thing that time three years ago? But we may be the only two remaining who went. So, a part of our goal on this is because this is what we've committed to as a district for our process improvement, making sure we have continuing board development in that area because our board turns over, right? I have one year left. I'm term limited, I have a little over a year. So, someone brand new who's not familiar to that process is going to be here. Josh has adventure very much of the training because he's drumming to it, Dave Krusen as well. So, as we're continuing to build our board, making sure that we all have some of that background information so that we can continue to process and use it wisely and well, is, I think, a part of our professional development goals. So, what more specifically do we need at this point? We do, so our commitment at this point as a board is to follow professional development plans. You've gotten a request for proposals and with our goal being to continue our development and our understanding of how to use those criteria, correct?
Correct. And my target is to have a, is to have someone identified to present to you in August for you to sign up.
And is everyone still consensus and agreement on that's kind of what the path we should be taking? Okay, so I've got two yeses over here with the lights off, but there were two yeses just to make sure we've got another one here. No, but it's a consensus and I don't want it to sound later like it was only Marie's opinion and no one else actually agreed to it. So, I believe that. Our next item is an executive session. And so, we will be making a motion to go into executive session and then we'll take a ten-minute break in order to give people time to adjust. Only the board and people invited into that executive session will be present for it. Decisions are made in executive session. But we will exit out of executive session to be able to then make a determination. With that, may I have a motion, please?
I'm moved to enter into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B, our conference with an attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding a request to hear a stakeholder grievance. I second that motion.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? During the vote, please. Winter?
Aye.
Try?
Aye.
Look your right. Aye, motion carries. Okay, so we'll take our ten-minute.